Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our May nineteenth Denellen Borough Council meeting. Our first item on the agenda is a call to order and a pledge for rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on the agenda is the reading of the Sunshine Statement and Roll Call by our municipal clerk, Mrs. Lauren Stats.
This meeting of the Denellen Borough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of May nineteenth, twenty twenty five was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the Courier on January ninth, twenty twenty five, and as a teleconference was noticed on the official Denellen website on May sixteenth, twenty twenty five, and on the public bulletin board on North Ave on May sixteenth, twenty twenty five, and has remained continuously posted as a required notice. Mayor Solento?
Present.
Council President Sigmund?
Here.
Mrs. Albertson?
Here.
Mrs. Lance?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
And Mr. Vandermark?
Here virtually.
Absent since we can't hear him.
We can't hear, we're gonna have to note about some.
Okay. Item number three on the agenda is Proclamations. This meeting, we have a proclamation designating the week of May eighteenth to the twenty fourth as Emergency Medical Services Week. So we have a proclamation. We have members of our local EMS. So if everybody would join us up front, I'll read the proclamation and we'll present it to you.
The last proclamation that designate the week of May eighteenth to twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas Emergency Medical Services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services team are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services have grown to fill a gap, we are providing important outpatient care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to quality medicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, of emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, fire players, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other outpatient medical care providers. The list is pretty lengthy. Whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas the official theme of EMS Week two thousand twenty five is "Meet Care for Everyone." Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Mayor Jason S. Solento, the Denellen Borough Council, recognize May eighteenth to May twenty fourth as EMS Week in the borough of Denellen, and encourage residents to join us in celebrating that any ways the Denellen Rescue Squad serves our community with courage, passion, commitment, each and every day. Under my signature, this May nineteenth, two thousand twenty five. So thank you all for the work that you do in the service you provide. As our banner heading on our twelve letter events. Top of the job is to let me get paid. Well, here EMS is very difficult. We have a lot that we have to put into trying take care of the health needs of all of our agents and respondents. Great to be recognized for this, and thank you everybody for the recognition that you've given us. We are there's very few people in today's day and age that want to take their time, essentially. A large portion volunteering and giving out to others. I am very proud of every person that has ever served on this department. Thank you, your service.
Okay, item number four on the agenda is the approval of our meeting minutes from our May fifth meeting. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Any comments, additions, or edits as the meeting minutes currently stand? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Item number five on the agenda is the introduction of ordinances. We have two this evening, twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, an ordinance determining salaries for the Borough of Denellen, and two, twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, an ordinance approving approving a five-year tax exemption for a new multiple-dwelling rental project constructed by Three Thirty-Seven Front Street Associates LLC at Three Thirty-Seven Front Street pursuant to the five-year tax exemption and abatement law in Chapter one fifteen V of the Denellen Municipal Code. As these are introductions, they will be read, motion second, and then no discussion. They'll be on file with the clerk's office and online for the period of time until our next council meeting on June second, in which the public has an opportunity to come, ask questions, and make comments. Mayor Council then have an opportunity to discuss and then make the determination on whether it should be adopted or not. Pertaining to twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, we will have our legal team here to answer any questions pertaining to what the five-year tax exemption is for this specific project. So without further ado, can I have a motion in second on twenty twenty-five dash thirteen?
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Can I have a motion in second on twenty twenty-five dash fourteen?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
And roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Item number six on the agenda is adoption of ordinances. Tonight we have twenty twenty-five dash twelve and ordinance to add a new Chapter thirty-nine municipal flag lowering policy to Part One Administrative Legislation of the Borough Code. Can I have a motion in second, please?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
At this moment, we will open the floor to the public regarding twenty twenty-five dash twelve alone, and we ask you, please state your name and address and ask any question you may have. Or make comment. Without hearing any, we will close that portion of the meeting and open the floor to mayor and council discuss twenty twenty-five dash twelve.
Yes, Mayor, I have something. Alex and I talked about this earlier. When it talks about the volunteers, so under the thirty-nine dash two, it has numbers one through three. Talks about the borough volunteers, and then in the next section, it also talks about volunteer members of the Fire Department and Rescue Squad. So just wondering about, I guess, the difference between borough volunteers and like Fire Department Rescue Squad volunteers, or if the Fire Department and Rescue Squad should be the upper section.
I see your point. Should that be number, should it be three past volunteer members of the Fire Department and Rescue Squad?
Yeah. If the party should be that way, it should be past, it should be present.
But it should be the same.
Yeah, I think it needs to be amended specifically. Are we honoring any borough volunteer, like anybody from M-TAS or Arts and Culture? Or are we only gonna reserve it for volunteer emergency services?
I think you should be getting volunteer. Past, like those who's or specify under recognition, you know, so. I think any, any, but it's volunteer, you know, in the organization.
Okay, so Council President Sigmund's point does stand that we need to be added appropriately. And we're, we're make, we're assuming that borough employees also encompasses Police Department?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't need to be specific on that because they're upstate and then.
And make the work provision.
We're past the public comment on this part, sorry. Unless is that appropriate that we can open the floor for him?
I think if the council is open to the discussion, you can reopen.
Okay, we'll open the floor. Do you, Chief Press?
Maybe the way to one word that is that it be borough volunteers and members of the defender fire company and the Denellen Rescue Squad. But I believe technically we're not borough volunteers in the current organization. While volunteers on the other provisions are our company in the fire department.
Okay, so if we wish to amend this at table, can we?
Right there.
We'll reintroduce it in motion. Okay, so can we have a motion in second to revise and reintroduce, and then a roll call with that, please? Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Lance.
Those were good points. Thank you. And thank you, Chief Press, for your recommendation.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes. I would, maybe we consider something along the lines of language of emergency services inclusive of Denella Police Department, Denella Fire Department, and the Denella Rescue Squad. So that's where you don't even have to say volunteer, you're including emergency service. Well, then also OEM starts to think so. Um, okay, perfect. Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Okay, item number seven on the agenda is resolutions. We have resolutions one twelve through two four, uh, two twelve to two fourteen, um, and Mrs. Stats will read through them. Give us a chance to ask any questions if we so choose.
Resolution number two twelve is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution two thirteen is to amend resolution from February eighteenth, twenty twenty five, number one seventeen, approving car chauffeur the Denellen Downtown Management Organization.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution two fourteen is awarding a contract to Earth Planters LLC for the purchase of self-watering hanging baskets and street bases at a cost not to exceed eleven thousand two hundred and six dollars.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
This needs to be amended because the account for this cannot be coming from one fifty North Avenue because that, those funds were specific for the Rapid Beacon Lights. It has to come from one of the other accounts for community benefits. There's redevelopment for one fifty specific from my, oh, or is it the twenty?
Twenty-six.
Got it. I apologize. Okay.
Scott for that member.
That's, uh, that is my fault. I admit when I am wrong, I am wrong. I thought it was related to the thirty-seven that they gave for the Rapid Beacon Light. I do apologize. Okay, no, it's correct, everyone. It's correct. It's correct on there.
Okay, I'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And this will be a pilot program to see if, how they go, how they, how they are, they last with everything, and then we'll consider in the future going throughout the entirety. Okay. And these were the ones that DDMO approved. Perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay, item number eight on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have resolutions two fifteen to two twenty-two. I ask council now, if there's any resolution you wish to pull, please review and let us know. And if there is, we will pull it and then vote the others as a consent, and if not, we'll just fully vote as a consent. Okay, without hearing any, we're gonna take a roll call for a motion in a second, please. Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Okay. Item number nine on the agenda, the council reports. Councilwoman Albertson?
None for me tonight.
Okay, Councilwoman Rios?
Yes. Public Works have completed the installation of the Hometown Hero banners and American flags throughout the downtown area. This cherished tradition honors to many heroes who have served our country. Additionally, Public Works has finished the annual monument cleaning at Washington Memorial Park. Harset, during the week of May fifth, Harset, in coordination with our Public Works foreman Rich Herker, oversaw a sewer lateral repair on Whittier Avenue as part of the New Jersey American Water Project. Board of Ed, the Board of Education's budget is now available for public viewing on their website. The next Board of Ed meeting will be held on Monday, June tenth at seven PM. Denon Public Library Music Storytime is held every Thursday and Saturday at ten thirty AM. Teen Gaming Club meets every Wednesday after school for video and board games. First-time homeowner, homebuyer workshop with Susanna Matos will take place on Tuesday, June fourth at six PM. Registration is required. Library closures, the library will be closed on Saturday, May twenty-fourth and Monday, May twenty-sixth in accordance of Memorial Day. Voting reminder, the public, Denon Public Library is now an official polling location. A drop box for mail-in ballots is also available on site. Uh, save the date. Stay tuned for more information on our upcoming summer reading kickoff events. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Scott, which is gonna go in order.
Through you for a loop tonight, and I'm not gonna be as chipper as Councilwoman Rios here. For DPW, the crews routinely clean the downtown area, the borough parks and properties, weekly lawn maintenance, other borough parks and properties, maintaining the ballfields. On May fourteenth, the crew stayed in for flooding issues and road closures. The crew cleared the catch basins after the heavy rainstorms last week. Uh, some of the members also walked the streams last week and cleaned out the trash trap after the heavy rain. Continue to pick up bags and branches around town, and as a reminder, May is the last month for leaf pickup. Uh, maintaining the street sweeping schedule, and a reminder to residents, please do not leave your cars on the streets. That will be swept according to the schedule and ensure a clean curb line. For the Mechanics Division, they service the police fleet as they come due for maintenance and breakdowns. Diagnosed car five oh nine for an engine total replacement based on a severe knocking noise during operation. They removed the old engine, stripped all accessories, transferred to the new engine, installed the new motor, tested and confirmed repairs, and followed the GM guidelines for the break-in of the new, new engine. Service the DPW fleet as they come due for maintenance and breakdowns, serviced all the lawn equipment for continued operation throughout the season. And Public Works will have its additional household rubbish drop-off June eleventh from twelve thirty to six PM and June fourteenth from eight AM to one PM. The drop-off is for residents, uh, would pay to drop off their household rubbish, twenty-five dollars for a carload, fifty dollars for an SUV or a minivan, seventy-five dollars for a pickup or van. ID is required to prove residential status, and all drop-offs must be prepaid at the clerk's office before the event. And the event is not open to contractors. And as a note on that, as always, the free regularly scheduled annual roll-off events are Sundays or Saturdays, take that back, Saturdays in September and October. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Lance?
Yes, for the Recreation Department. Um, this spring has been really busy with activity in the recreation programs with forty-seven athletes involved in tennis, sixty players in baseball, twenty-two softball players, and eighty-one open soccer athletes. So in total, two hundred and ten children participate in spring sports this year. The Recreation Department is grateful to all the coaches who help make these activities possible. Join us for the annual Memorial Day Parade next Monday, May twenty-sixth. Come and celebrate our annual Memorial Day Parade starting at ten AM. A ceremony will follow at Washington Memorial Park. If your organization is interested in marching or featuring a float in the parade, please reach out to Recreation Program Coordinator Kelly Cedar at kcedar@denellenborough.com. Let's come together to honor those who made the ultimate sacrifice. And summer camp registration is now open. Registration for summer camp is available, so if you're interested, please visit the recreation website to enroll your child. The camp is designed for ages five to twelve and will run from June sixteen to August fifteenth. This nine-week camp promises endless fun, featuring field trips, daily outdoor and indoor activities, as well as an exciting, exciting water game. Don't wait. Register today as spots are filling up quickly. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Council President?
Uh, yes, the mayor's Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Task Force is continuing now its second annual walk-to-school Wednesday initiative, although the last two Wednesdays and possibly this Wednesday will be rainy. Um, we will not be holding that against the students who participate. Uh, so when you walk to school, we can still punch your cards, and there will be more pizza provided this year as we did last year. And that is all for me.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay. So update from the Middlesex County Recycling, the MCIA. This past week, Alex Miller and Rich Herker attended a meeting with the MCIA about the ACL program, so the automotive single arm. A ninety-five-gallon two-wheel recycling container will be delivered to each home in the borough between June ninth and July twenty-fifth. Residents can start using the ninety-five-gallon recycling bins for the August sixth recycling pickup. MCI noted that these bins cannot be used for recycling pickup before August sixth, uh, as the crew will still be using the backload trucks. The ninety-five-gallon bins will take all types of recycling in one container. Residents should cut their cardboard to fit in the bin. The trucks also has a camera to see what is being dumped from the bin into the truck, which will be good because then they can see if they dump anything on the street. Residents can keep the old recycling bins for their use or throw them out. They're not recyclable themselves? That's government for you. Okay. Reduce, reuse, and throw it out, apparently. Jeez. Okay. What? It is, it's counter, counterproductive. Sorry. Oh, brother. Walk and talk with the mayor. Um, join me on Saturday, June seventh for our monthly walk and talk with the mayor, well, me, at Columbia Park, nine thirty AM. Uh, please join us. Um, I always enjoy walking with Denise, but I think she's getting bored being the only one talking with me, and I'm definitely getting bored talking to myself. So, um, take advantage of this opportunity, um, because you get to talk to me face-to-face and not just talk on Facebook. Uh, the walk-to-school Wednesdays. The mayors, did you report on that? I might have missed that. The walk, thank you. Okay, so I'll scratch that. Okay, Memorial Day now serious. The Borough of Denellen's annual Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony is coming up a week from Monday, May twenty-sixth. The parade will begin at ten AM on New Market Road between Denon Public Library and the American Legion, and will conclude at Washington Memorial Park, where the ceremony will take place. The route and road closures during the parade have been posted to our social media pages and our website. The route is the same as previous years, and roads along the route will reopen as the parade has fully passed through. Uh, we look forward to honoring the brave men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. Um, Second Street Phase One, which is the DOT project and the Mill and pave project from Denon and Middlesex border to Madison Avenue. Uh, you may have noticed curb installation for the Mill and pave project between Schwartz Place and the Denon-Middlesex border had, was completed this past week. The Borough of Denon fully funded, fully funded this project, and with it, we are trying to match those, the, the, most of the work that is being done on Second Street through the DOT project. Uh, the Second Street DOT project between Schwartz Place and Madison Ave started this past week with removal and replacement of severely damaged curbs, which will continue over the next two weeks, and every driveway is having an apron? Okay. Uh, Klein Place, good update on this. The infra-red pavement repairs were performed and CME are engineers coordinating with the contractor to repair chipped curves and pavement cracks. Um, so, uh, some pavement cracked is normal just because of how things go. What they do is they put the, that rubberized stuff on it, right? Okay. Um, so, uh, and if you drive down Klein Place, it doesn't look like they ever had to cut it for the repair, so it, it actually looks pretty good. Not what they did on Oak Parkway, uh, so which will be replaced itself. Okay. I'm in rare form tonight. Okey-dokey. Uh, council discussion, anything to discuss this evening? That was on the agenda. Was there? It wasn't? What was that? Which is? They, I, they not have gotten, they have not gained approval through zoning because it's been noted to them that it can't be storage. So they have to build a space in which it would be stored in the back, and the front has to look like a showroom, a, a display place. To date, I don't believe that has happened. So if you could just follow up with zoning and code, I'd appreciate, and I think Councilwoman Lance would certainly appreciate it. They have been working on it. So if they don't do anything and there's a violation, has to go through court at this point, but they can't technically open their doors until it's the way the shop's supposed to look in there.
Yep.
Sorry. Um, does the signage also have to change then? To reflect the current business?
Which should probably at the point of operations. Can you double-check that, too? That's a good question. Interesting, interesting situation because that property is also listed for sale, so it's, uh, we'll see what happens. Okay, if you could follow up with us, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Um, item number eleven, department head reports. Uh, clerk's office registrar?
Just a reminder that Lincoln Middle School is no longer a polling location. The new polling locations are as follows. District one and two at the Senior Center, districts three and six at the Firehouse, and districts four and five at the Public Library. Tomorrow, May twentieth, is the last day to register to vote in New Jersey for the upcoming June tenth primary election.
Thank you. Legal?
I know, report.
How's it going in communications there, Mr. Billy? Still communicating? Good work. Uh, administration? Nothing? Police?
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Lieutenant. How's Rescue Squad doing?
Uh, just in April, we responded to twenty-six calls, including the vehicle accidents, and, uh, this is part of the report. In the upcoming weeks, uh, we have three EMTs that will be returning to town from, uh, college that will be responding to all their assignments.
Oh, that's great news. Good work. Thank you.
Are, uh, recently, uh, just after, after passing
God bless. Thank you. Um, and I know we have to set up a meeting with Alex and get things situated there, so we will get that done. Okey-dokey. No other department heads are here this evening. Okey doke, no other department heads are here this evening, um. Public comments, item number twelve on the agenda, we just ask if you are a member of the public either online or here in person, please state your name and address and we're. Here to listen to your concerns.
The rescue squad, Jeff Best, four oh one Madison Avenue, uh, at the, our church at four oh one, uh, at uh one hundred Bound Brook Road in Middlesex. On every Tuesday and Thursday, uh, we are providing uh food and meals for anybody that needs it. Uh, then, um, people can start coming around two o'clock in the afternoon when the uh food comes in. Alright, so if we have anybody that needs it in town?
That's very kind and generous and we appreciate you letting us know and those in the town that might need that. Due to food insecurity, so thank you, chief. Um, or would that be Pastor Best, Pastor Best? Thank you. God bless you for doing that. Okay, any other members of the public? Without hearing any, we will close that portion of the meeting, um, we do, item number thirteen is Resolution two twenty-three. Um, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act and just N J S A ten four dash six permits the closing of meetings to the public under certain circumstances. And whereas there exists such a circumstance. And whereas authorizing the Borough Council to go into executive session to discuss litigation, after which action may be taken. And whereas minutes of the executive session will be kept and will be released when the matters under discussion during the executive session are no longer confidential. So therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council to enter into executive such uh session. So can I have a motion in a second, please?
Move it, Segman.
Second, Lance?
Roll call, Stacks?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance? Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mister Scott?
Yes.
And Mister Segman?
Yes.
Okay, we are gonna prepare to go into executive session for tho- you, the public is welcome to join us back afterwards. Um, if you don't, June second, two thousand twenty, clearly two thousand twenty-five at seven P M online in these chambers is our next council meeting, so. Uh, we're gonna give a two-minute recess in order to set up for executive session, thank you.